I had a call to order the October 25th, 2021 City of Tuolton City Council meeting to order. We'll start off tonight with our Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence, both led by Counselor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. If you wish, please put your hand over your heart and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, under God, with
Liberty?
Liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I usually don't forget, but it's different when you're on camera, I guess. Next, I want to remember that those that we've lost to COVID, it was a week, especially losing Colin Powell, and just remembering that they're vulnerable people and be careful with each other. This, as of today, we've lost 736,000 people in the United States. And on October 7th, Oregon reported 59 deaths from COVID, which is the highest single number of deaths in a single day since the pandemic began. To date, we've lost, in our state, 4,295 people. And boosters now are available, so there's a lot of information to consider. And there's a lot of mental health issues as well during this time. So however you feel about how we handle it, please be kind to each other because people are struggling. Please join me in a moment of silence to remember those that we lost and are suffering due to the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, that brings us to our public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the City Council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Poll Center on the Zoom meeting who'd like to address the Council, this is your appropriate time. Bates, do we have anyone at the Poll Center?
No one at the Poll Center, Mayor, and no one has notified me online.
All right, we'll give folks a few seconds here to raise your hand virtually if they like to address the City Council or public comment. All right, it doesn't look like we do. All right, so I'll move on. We'll now move to our consent agenda. These items are considered routine. It will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the Council would like that item removed and heard separately tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of eight items, quite a few. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of October 11th, 2021. Item two, consideration of resolution number 5574-21, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Oregon Community Path Program and appropriating specific purpose revenues in the city's general fund during the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Item number three, consideration of resolution number 5575-21, awarding a contract for engineering services for the B-level water main upsize IBOC to Norwood Reservoirs project and authorizing an appropriation transfer in the Water Development Fund for the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Item number four, consideration of resolution number 5576-21, to annually adopt the City of Tuolton investment policy. Item number five, consideration of resolution number 5577-21, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Washington County for a distribution from the Major Street Transportation Improvement Program Opportunity Fund and appropriating a specific purpose revenues for the city's general fund during the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Item number six, consideration of resolution number 5578-21, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement for two state homeland security grant program grants and appropriating social purpose revenues in the city's general fund during the fiscal year 2021-22 budget. Item number seven, consideration of resolution number 5579-21, authorizing the city manager to execute in an intergovernmental agreement with the Tuolton Development Commission. And finally, item number eight, consideration of resolution 5580-21, accepting Department of Justice's Office of Community Oriented Policing Services grant funds and appropriating specific purpose revenue for the city's general fund during the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Are any items on this of the eight that anyone would like to have pulled from the consent agenda and heard separately tonight? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on the motions? All right, Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt?
Aye.
Counselor Sacco?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also, if unanimous. All right. Moving on to special reports, the annual report of the Oneida Poll Center Advisory Committee. I see Sarah's name there. Here she comes. Hey, Sarah, how are you?
Good, thank you. And is Susan in here?
Susan Noack?
I know she's here. There she is.
There I am, sorry. I had trouble holding her hand.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Bubinak and members of council. My name is Sarah Shepherd and I'm the center supervisor at the Oneida Poll Center. We are here to present the Poll Center Annual Report. It will be presented by Susan Noack, the chair of the advisory committee. And I will share my summary.
Welcome, Susan.
Thank you. Well, good evening and thank you, Mayor Frank and the council. It's nice to be back after a year, even though we're not quite in person yet. So this first slide is our committee, as it stands now. Due to the closure and meeting by Zoom, we got decreased by quite a bit for some of our members, but we're coming back eventually. And we know that when we do, we will be able to recruit new members and increase the committee once again. Our committee role is to hear updates from Sarah and Marilyn with year-to-date figures for attendance, online programming currently, and we all share ideas for future programming online so far. We have been able to increase participation since we went virtual in March 2020 and are able to offer excellent programming with consistent participation. We have continued to have three different exercise programs, aerobics, Tai Chi, and yoga, which are well attended. Two sessions of active living every day, which was for 24 weeks, and about 12 in each class. Heat is another one, that's healthy eating every day. Aging Mastery Class, which is 10 weeks, that gives topics including advanced planning, importance of physical activity, nutrition, medication review. There's a monthly book club. We take virtual trips through different international cities and national parks. Monthly online socia's where we just meet and chat for an hour and catch up with our friends. A lot of educational webinars and this great program called WISE is coming back for six weeks. It's an educational and health promotion program that aims to help older adults increase their knowledge and awareness of issues related to health and the aging process. As we all know, whether we're city, nonprofit, or whatever, in the community, partnerships and community relationships are vital to the success of any program. As you can see from the list on this slide, JPC does it well, thanks to Marilyn and Sarah. Meals on Wheels has been a partner for four years. The others are ongoing for at least six years and are always present. Two of our standout are Barhite, who for the past six years, or seven years, has sponsored our Saturday morning Yoga for Vets. Obviously, it was not, we didn't do it this year, but we know they'll come back when we go back to in-person participation. Washington County Aging and Disability is a huge partner for the second year in a row with collaborating with JPC to bring awareness and education and program support to Tuolton. They tell us that they had, the Oneida Poll Center has demonstrated strategic leadership and passionate support for the older adults they serve. We are grateful for our unique partnership with JPC, as it would be a challenge to provide support to local seniors without this trusted connection to the community. I think that says it all for how well JPC is run and what they do. Sarah has, over the years, has built a really strong partnership with National Recreation and Parks Association. And JPC and Tuolton have received national press on the programs that we offer at the center. And they've helped us produce videos and given us grants to further our programming. We talk about, a lot about benefits for seniors. And most of the benefits that the seniors received when we were in person have actually been duplicated online, as social engagement and interaction are the keys to combating isolation in older adults. This is why we do this, is because the benefits and online outreach it affords our seniors. For the fiscal year July 1/20 to 6/31/21, JPC was only open nine days. However, we served over 3,100 active adults just through their virtual fitness program and over 1,400 in all the virtual enrichment programs. And with the grant received from NRPA, JPC was one of nine centers in the whole country to offer this program. So that's a big hat to wear. And lots of congratulations to the staff at JPC and Parks Department for being able to promote us like that and get us national attention. Being active during COVID-19, the staff instructors have been flexible and creative to be able to switch gears to virtual. The consistent attending numbers are a testament to their diligence and their innovation and their dedication to JPC and our seniors. While we didn't have any building use during the last year, and then obviously within were no rentals or after-hours programs or classes, this past year, the center was used as the COVID vaccine clinic in March and April, and it was a cooling center during the heat waves in June and August. And both of those events were very appreciated. And there is an action plan for 2122. Under the management and leadership of Sarah and Marilyn, JPC continues to keep current with all the 2020-2021 changes in our lifestyles and is able to bring vital programming to our seniors. The partnerships that have been developed are outstanding and build awareness of JPC throughout the community, besides giving support when applying for grants and sponsorships. And before, if you have any questions, I just would like to make a comment. This is my second year being chair. It's about my tenth year of hanging out at the center. And I have to tell you, you have a great staff, city. And Marilyn and Sarah and under the tutelage of the Parks and Rec Department and Julie and Ross and Rich, this has been an amazing venture and journey, watching how JPC has grown and the kinds of programs and classes and social activities that they offer the seniors. I'm a huge senior advocate, and I watch other centers, and I check on them around Washington County and Clackamas County. And in this past year and a half, JPC is one of the only ones that has offered any kind of virtual programming. And especially to the extent that they do, there is something every single day online that you can do as a senior to participate in active living. So congratulations to all the staff in the city for having this wonderful resource in our community. And thank you.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you, the members of the Poll Center Advisory Board. Questions for Sarah or for Susan? Or comments? Counselor Pratt?
I just want to comment that, you know, the Oneida Poll Center is just, it's a social outlet and sometimes the only social outlet for people. And you've done an amazing job of keeping that connectivity in creative ways during COVID. So just thank you all for all your efforts over the past couple of years.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Brooks?
Well, thank you, Susan, for the great presentation. It's nice to see you. And I just, I was astounded to learn, and I just think, you know, with our, I don't want to say little Parks Department, but because of the way that different cities are organized, we're able to do this is so impressive to me. And to get the national recognition is something I didn't realize. So thanks for bringing that to my attention. And I'm also curious if, especially since it's online, if other cities are not doing this, if this is being, you know, shared with residents across Washington County to come drop into our online activities. Because seniors everywhere, especially right now, it just seems like such an important time of need to be able to have an outlet and a place to connect. And I just know too, from my work, that loneliness shows up on the pain scale, and so, and the literal physical pain scale. So these kinds of connections are just so vitally important. So I want to thank you, Susan, for your leadership and work on that. And then my, so that question, and then one other question was, how old do you have to be to be a senior and to be able to attend the senior programs?
Sarah?
Can I take that one, Susan?
Yes, you take that one.
Okay. First question, one of the reasons being a partner and having a great relationship with Washington County Disability, Aging, and Veteran Services is the outreach we get, we are definitely reaching other counties in Washington, and other cities in Washington County, as well as other states. We've had people from different states that are participating as well. So while we try to reach as many people as we can in Tuolton, we also do, you know, try to reach, you know, outside of the city as well. And when I first was hired, we, we were mainly, we would say, you know, 55 and older senior center. We never, we never liked to call ourselves the senior center, kind of get rid of that stigma of older people. We, while most of our programs kind of go towards the 55 and older crowd, we like to consider ourselves active aging population. I mean, in some of our programs, we get some in the, you know, early to mid 40s. You know, it really just, anybody can join. We have great instructors that tailor a lot of the programs and fitness classes to the participants. So a lot of modifications can be made, very welcoming to all adult age groups.
Thank you so much. I think, you know, especially now, with having to wear a mask at the gym and things like that, to be able to do yoga online with the community center is just a great opportunity. So thanks again, Susan and Sarah, for all your work and everybody that helps make it happen.
I see Counsel Reyes and Counsel President Grimes.
Thank you, Susan and Sarah. Very great, very nice presentation. And I am really proud to have this center in our community for our aging population. So one of your action plans for 2021 and 2022, you said increase diversity, visibility, and awareness. Can you give me an example of, one example, how you're increasing diversity, visibility, and awareness?
That's a Sarah question.
Sure. One of the things that we're trying to do in the Parks and Rec Department and in the city as a whole, is increase diversity, visibility, and awareness. So we really want to try to reach out to as many people as possible. And having, having programs that, you know, might be tailored more towards Spanish-speaking populations, or, you know, translations of flyers and websites, and reach out in that way is a way to kind of, one of those things to make that happen.
Well, the reason I ask is because maybe there's, there are people out there that are interested in inviting, since this is all Tuolton, inviting others to join or be part of. But if there's no, if there's a language barrier, I mean, it's okay, as long as we're moving forward and we're thinking about that.
For sure, definitely.
For our community. Thank you.
Counsel President Grimes?
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment you guys again for the amazing job you do and how much you are the heart of the community and the way that you were able to pivot during tough COVID times to being able to offer connection and humanity and classes and opportunities to connect online. I thought the pivot was amazing and so well executed. It's just incredible. And even the way we were able to take the center and be able to offer it as a vaccine site for community members to be able to find a place to receive the care near the home. So it cut down on traveling and, you know, the online and all the different difficulties for, you know, older members of our community to be able to get and receive the vaccines. I just, you know, I just think it's an amazing part of our community. And I think that the job that you do and the creativity of the classes and the learning opportunities and the exercise and the, you know, the cards and the, just the social aspect of it is just amazing. I know our family enjoyed going there two times a week up until some of the in-person things were suspended. And it's an important part of our life and our family. And I just appreciate that and the work that you do and applaud you and say, keep it up. Keep adding more because it's, you know, it's God's work. It's very important and very well regarded, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I've just got two things. One, I want to thank Sarah for continuing the recognition of our veterans. Highlight every year for me was the Veterans Recognition Breakfast. Of course, we can't do that with COVID, but she's leading the charge again with the signs that recognizing veterans that they can put in front of their house. Was the deadline yesterday or today to sign up to ask for a sign, Sarah?
It was yesterday, but we do have extras. So if you know anyone that needs one, they can call or fill out the web form. We've got plenty of extras from last year, too. So it is a different design this year, but just in case, we do have, we do have a lot still left from last year, too.
And what's the phone number they should call?
The Poll Center direct line is 503-691-3061.
Thank you. Because that's a lot easier to fill out a form. It's easier to call.
Yes, yep.
All right. Then the second question has to do with Meals on Wheels. I remember Ross, I think it's a couple of months ago, gave us an update about the Meals on Wheels and gave him some kind of meal program going again in the Poll Center. What's the latest and greatest on that?
Can I field that one, Sarah?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. I sit on the Meals on Wheels Council, and we meet every other month. And they really did try, this summer, when we thought we were going to be open, they really did try to figure out a way to open the centers again for the meal service. What they decided was is that the transition from the 8,000-a-day home delivery that they're doing now to back to delivery to the kitchens and smaller home deliveries. And even though they wouldn't know how that was going to turn out, because they don't know who was going to come back in, the transition was really difficult. And it meant a whole new kitchen order and how they cooked and how many volunteers they needed. So they're waiting it out. But they're, and the last report was possibly January, but then we also heard in the early summer it would be September. You know, so they're doing their, I can tell you, the Resource Center is doing their due diligence and making sure that when they do open again, it's done smoothly and that everyone is going to be served again. In the meantime, they have added home chats, and they have a whole volunteer crew that makes phone calls to seniors that sign up for. Last year at Thanksgiving, they made 400 calls, just on that one day. And it's consistent every day. They are starting a new program for, kind of like Villages Northwest, where people that can do services will sign up and volunteer to come in to mow your grass, change your light bulbs, fix own appliance kind of thing, where you need the kind of help. So they're being very innovative in the kind of services they offer, since they can't do in-house dining. But we've all had to recreate ourselves.
Yeah.
On all, you know, everywhere. And Meals on Wheels is doing it really well. I'm proud to be associated with them, along with the center.
All right. Thanks, Susan. Because I know, back, I know, I think most of the council has attended Meals on Wheels lunch or two before the COVID hit. And you could see the sense of, you know, it was community involvement for people to see each other and chat, catch up, you know, get a nutritional meal. But just, you know, the biggest thing was just spending time with folks. And I know that a lot of people are missing that, but it sounds, this phone call idea sounds terrific. So they have a little bit of socialization, someone to talk to, not just stare at their TV or at the wall bang, because it's
There are two different crisis hotlines available, one in Washington County and one in Clackamas County for seniors. But that's not the same as just getting a friendly phone call. And it really works. And I know Sarah and Marilyn were doing it for quite a while, also just out of our center alone, making that effort and doing in-home visits. So it'll come back. The center and Meals on Wheels, it's family. That's why we go. It's family. And a lot of people don't have families, so it becomes your family. And to let Maria know, our last two managers were Spanish-speaking, as that was actually their first language, in English, and was able to communicate. We, in the dining center part, we would get all ethnic groups that would come in. And by coming just for the meal, they come into the building, they meet other people, and they stay. So we're learning how to do diversity better. And Meals on Wheels is doing the same kind of training and outreach that the city is doing, too, with diversity. And it'll all come together.
Right. Who brings people together all the time? Right. Who brings people together all the time?
And we learn to talk to each other no matter what our language.
Right.
And bingo, and quilting, all those things are good.
As long as it's over a meal, you'll be fine.
Well, thank you, Susan and Sarah for the update. Thanks for attending tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
All right. So next up, we move into general business. And the first item in general business is the Twolton Moving Forward 2022 Neighborhood Traffic Safety Project Update. Mr. McCarthy, how are you?
Hello. Good evening.
Welcome.
So I'm Mike McCarthy, and I work for the city as a transportation engineer in the Community Development Department and managing the Twolton Moving Forward Program. We have an exciting list of neighborhood traffic safety projects that we're bringing to this evening that I think are some really good practical solutions to some real community needs that we've heard from the people. And I'd also like to introduce Katie Mangle with Alta Planning and Design. And she facilitated our process to choose the projects. And I thought did a really good job of that. And I wanted to have her describe how we go through the process. So I'm sharing my screen here. And go ahead, Katie.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Hi, everyone. I've seen many of you online and in the bus a few years ago and at some of our events this summer. So it's really nice to be here with you this evening. So as Mike said, one of my favorite parts of the BON program is this Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program. When council created the program in the beginning, BON was passed in 2016, 2018. It was important to identify some small projects because I think everyone knew some of the bigger marquee projects like Twolton Sherwood Road and some of Martin Assisager. They take a long time to go from engineering through construction. So it was important to have a set of smaller projects. You could see, you know, quick progress and have wins around the community. And to really also make sure that a lot of those were continued to be crowdsourced. So that's why we have a separate process every year, come to council and share what we heard from the community and what, you know, essentially from all of the comments that we got, what are the recommended projects? And so the, you know, request for council tonight is just to give us your nod in concurrence that you also think this is a strong slate of projects. See, Mike, I'm not seeing a shared screen. Could you make sure that slides are up?
I thought it. It says again.
In live, right?
Are you seeing the shared screen now?
Almost. It looks like it's starting. There you go. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So here we go. So from the very beginning, these have been the guiding principles that we've been using. So this was a program that was looking at addressing traffic safety issues at the neighborhood scale throughout the community identified by the community. And the idea was that these would be short, short projects that could go from idea to construction in about a year. Again, as opposed to some of these bigger projects that are taking three or four years. So these are supposed to be, you know, kind of faster turnaround. And also make sure that they're addressing areas throughout the city. So key to the process, really every year, has been this green button you see there, which is on the BON program website, Twolton Moving Forward. And the suggested project button has become very popular as a kind of a go-to way, really easy entry for people to hit that button, fill out a quick form and just tell us what they're experiencing, whether it's speeding or a missing sidewalk gap or, you know, a bus stop that's not accessible. So that's, these have been continuous throughout the program. Next slide. And we set these same, generally the same criteria have been applied every year. First geographic and diversity and equity, looking to spread this separate pot of money around the community. A solution oriented, like Mike said earlier, practical design, you know, making sure that we're actually identifying, understanding the problem that the community is identifying and really understanding like what are they really getting at? What is the issue? And then we can have an engineering solution. We can actually solve it with a capital project. As opposed to, you know, something we can't really do with this program is reduce all of the posted speeds in town. So that one, that's not really a solution that is in our toolbox. But we can add crosswalks, we can build sidewalks, things like that. And budget approved. So we're aiming for approximately $100,000 for projects just to make sure that we can, you know, have about five or six projects per year. So it has to be a smaller scale project that fits within this program. Next slide. And so this was the last year where we've scheduled to do solicitation, going out and asking the community what ideas they have. So we really, you know, this year wanted to take an equity forward approach. And one of the things that we've noticed, which is, you know, not a surprise. I think everybody in all different parts of our field are noticing that we, in a lot of the public involvement and communication we do, there are parts of the community that are just not always receiving the message or we're not, we haven't, we can always do better reaching, especially the Latinx and Spanish speaking parts of the community. So we wanted this year to really focus on that. And the call for projects was open to everybody. We talked to the CIOs. It was in the newsletter. So it was open to everyone. But in terms of the staff effort, we focused more on an equity focused outreach and putting, this is a picture of a yard sign that we put up in some parts of town and really trying to use the social media and other networks to get the word out, making sure that everybody knew about this process and this opportunity. We did also consider some of the carryover suggestions from last year, the ones that maybe were really good ideas, but we just, you know, didn't have enough money to fund everything. We looked at those again this year to make sure we gave everything a good chance. Next slide. And so we received a bunch of suggestions. We, 106 in all. And that includes 16 that were carried forward from last year. So this map shows essentially the streets that were identified as being, having some kind of a safety problem. There, as we looked through them, the part of, one of the fun things was actually seeing how many suggestions were already addressed by BON projects, you know, requests for a signal at Martin Assisager or request for crossing at like a 72nd and Sagard and things like that. Where we could actually say, yeah, we hear you. And guess what? That's going to be constructed this summer. So that was kind of fun. So those were put aside. And there were a few projects, if you see that long blue line that trails off the page, that was about Twolton Sherwood Road, which is mostly a county facility. And, you know, there's the county projects will address some of that. So outside the scope of this fund. And some of them were really for, you know, comments will pass on to ODAT. So once we culled out those, we were left with 68 suggestions on city streets that are in places where we had to dig in and look. And turns out those 68 suggestions really ended up being about 36 locations around town. So maybe we would receive four comments that were generally all about the intersection of Boone's Frey Road and Avery or something like that. So it came down to 36 locations. Thanks. And we, what we did was think about how we can use data and resources that we have to understand where the problems are and where we should prioritize the resources. So these five factors here in the orange boxes were, where the BON program team really focused, our effort of trying to understand what the issues were and what type of solutions we could offer. The size of the text is generally, you know, kind of the importance where we really focus the energy. So we did collect speed data. A lot of complaints were about speeding on streets. Some of those were, you know, backed up by the data. Some of them, I think that a lot of people felt that the speeds were too high, that they weren't really a lot higher than some of the posted speeds. And so that's where we're in a little bit of a pickle. We can't actually go, you know, try to slow people too down, down too far if they're not actually speeding above the posted speed. So that's something that is really outside of the program. But we wanted to make sure that we understood that because there were a lot of complaints that related to speed. We have some mapping that I'll show in a moment that identifies, yeah, the areas of racial diversity and lower income. So we looked at that. We also wanted to pay attention to priority areas for access to transit and making sure that we're spreading the money around town. Okay, go ahead, Mike, to the next one. One of the things that we, the next slide, we wanted to do this year a little differently is look at, use some mapping resources that is already available. And I'm going to run through a few of these. So this is already available to us and we were able to quickly apply it to those 38 sites and help us understand how do we prioritize. So this is the Equity Index Map. It was created using data that was just prior to the 2020 census. But the dark areas in purple generally show that what we call the areas of greater equity need, meaning there's sort of a cross-section of the lower income areas and areas with a higher proportion of people of color. And kind of right around Central Twolton, the blue hatching here shows the industrial zones. So there's a lot of the dark purple area that where we know there are not a lot of people living there. Obviously, they're in the industrial area. Whoops, we lost the slide. Let's see. Mike?
Sorry, my internet cut out on me there.
Okay, I have it ready if I need to share. There we go. Great. And so a second set of resources that we used was from the Triment Pedestrian Plan that was also recently completed, but helped us answer the question of what are the most important locations for improving pedestrian access to transit? And some pretty, pretty cool maps that were generated as part of that project that really Triment created for the cities to use for these types of conversations. And so what this shows is that the area in red, which is kind of right around Fred Meyer, shows that those streets, those bus stops in that area are kind of the most important for ensuring that the people who are walking to those bus stops have great access. And those mountains map was created using a combination of demand. So those are high bus stops that are really highly used in an area with, you know, higher equity needs, lower income and things like that. And also there's, you know, some gaps in that area. So that really helped us focus in on that part of town is needing a place, needing some investment. Next slide. Next. Can we get to the next one?
Mike, are you there?
Mike?
No, it's not moving.
Okay. Well, the next slide, when it comes up, is going to show a map.
Katie, maybe you can share here.
Show me too? Yep. The, so.
Yeah, you can throw it up.
No problem. Shows, oops. A map of the crossing gaps around town, meaning there are long stretches more than 800 feet along a street where there isn't a really, a really well-marked crosswalk. So places where it's hard to cross across the street. So we looked at that as well. Just a second. There we go. So all that. There we go. So those are a lot of the places. Can you see my screen? Okay. Yeah, okay. Where the places where it's hard for people to cross the street. So drum roll, with all of that, considering all of those different factors and all of the suggestions that we got from the community, the team ended up focusing on these five locations. And Mike is going to take it from here and tell you about these specific locations and what we, how we think we can make them better. Go ahead, Mike. I'll, I'll work on the slides. So let me know when you want me to advance.
Thank you. Sorry about the internet connection difficulties there. So the first project is on Avery Street, right near Twolton Sherwood Road. And go to the next slide. This is a section where the existing sidewalk just abruptly ends right about where that curb is in Avery Street. And there's a gap along the west side or southwest side of Avery. That's, it's reasonably flat. The curb is already there. And so within the budget of this type of project, we can actually fill in that sidewalk gap and complete the sidewalk along Avery, connecting all the way up to that area. And then the next one is on Martin Assis, right near Mohawk. There's an existing crosswalk there that it's a tough, scary crosswalk to cross. You know, multiple lanes each direction. We have actually had people hit there in recent years. And so we want to put rectangular rapid flashing beacons or those quick flashing lights that you see in other places around town at this particular crosswalk. We think it's a key connection. A lot of multifamily residences in the area, connecting to some key transit stops, also connecting over towards Fred Meyer and other things in that area. And then we'll take a look at some possible traffic changes here. If we can allow left turns out from the west side safely, we'd want to do it. But we want to take a closer look at the traffic on that first. And then the next third project is in the Stone Ridge neighborhood. We've heard a lot about lack of street lighting and parking issues in this particular neighborhood, North Sagard on 67th and 68th in that loop. And we think there's some changes that we could make to both provide better lighting and find ways to allow more vehicles to park legally along the street there. And this one, we would want to have a lot of community conversation about what people really want to see and what they think would really help. So this one would have a pretty big community conversation phase. And there's a lot of needs there and a lot of, so we could see this one having a slightly larger budget than a typical neighborhood traffic safety project, if we can really identify the needs. And as I was talking with Betsy in our city manager's office, they're talking about improving the community. And when we invest in the community that young people live in, it has great impacts in a lot of aspects of life. As I was heading out of the neighborhood, the school bus pulled up. And I think almost the whole school bus got off. So seeing just dozens of, you know, high school students walking in. And we'd love to help and brew this neighborhood. The next project is on Martin Assis, right near Fred Meyer. And as you see back on that access to transit map, it's sort of the center of that red. This is where a lot of people are really walking to try to get groceries at Fred Meyer or to try to take care of some of their everyday needs or walk into jobs or trying to take a wheelchair to their jobs. And in that bus stop on the right in that photo, there's some pretty bad conditions for people trying to get through in a wheelchair right there. Like it'd be really hard to fit between the traffic signal pole and the curb. And we want to fix up that area in particular to make it better for all the people that have to go through there. And then the fifth project is on the Sagard Street Bridge over I-5. And I'm amazed at how often I see people walking across this bridge, even though it's pretty scary. You know, the whole length of that orange line is really pinned between guard rail and the road, whether it's the bridge rail or rail at the top of the fill that the road is sitting on. And we like to try to do what we can to make it better for people walking through there. Now, we don't have the budget for like a brand new pedestrian bridge or something like that. But on the bridge itself, the travel lanes are a little wider than they need to be. So we look at narrowing the travel lanes down to a more normal width. And then we can allow a little more space for people walking or biking along the bike lanes and getting in some kind of a physical element between the vehicles and the people. And we have to work out a lot of specifics. We want to make sure we can get our street sweepers through there. It is a state-owned bridge because it crosses I-5. So we'd be working with the state through some of their processes. But we believe that we can make a big difference to help people there. So those are the five projects that we're recommending. And this is an estimated cost for each of them. You know, as I mentioned, the Stone Ridge neighborhood, one would be, could be a little larger than the typical day-to-day traffic safety program project, but they will fit within the budget that we have. And link with that, so. link with that. Uh, so some of the next steps would be talking more with the community about what people would want to see in those particular project areas, particularly at Stone Ridge neighborhood. And uh, also checking on some of the safety analysis, what we do with that Martin Azzi and Mohawk intersection. And then there are some projects that came in that are more about like, can you put a specific sign here or there? And to just add a traffic sign is something that we probably just do through operations crews. So we'd be looking at those as well. And then the larger projects that were beyond the scale of what we could do or that would involve like fixing traffic on state highways. Those go into our transportation system plan process. And that'll be a bigger discussion coming relatively soon. Um, transportation in the whole city and how we relate to the whole region. So uh, what, these are the five projects that we recommend. And with that, do we have any questions or comments or suggestions?
Thanks, Mike. Can you uh, take down the presentation so we can see each other?
Yes. There we go.
Questions are for Mike and Katie? That's President Grant.
Thank you for your presentation. That was great to see. Um, I have a question regarding the um, the Sagard Bridge going over the uh, the freeway. The improvements that we just did for, or in the process of doing for the new signal lights going in at uh, Martin Azzi and Sagard. I believe part of the widening was to add a bike lane.
Correct. Correct.
And that comes right up to the edge of the bridge. I know it comes up right in front of the um, the apartment buildings there. So did we help at all with the project of getting a bike lane that was closer to the bridge?
That helps considerably. And the bike lane actually goes all the way across the bridge, but the sidewalk ends right where the bridge guard rail begins.
Yeah.
So people end up having to walk in the bike lane. So the bike lanes, we're adding it to, it's Sagard and Martin Azzi, I think will really help make that a more continuous bike corridor.
Yes, I agree. Thanks.
Okay, really?
Yeah, I'm just sticking to the same um, area right there on the walkway. I, I've driven around there a lot when I used to drive down to um, Happy Valley. And you're right, I'm surprised to see a lot of people walking and it's pretty dark too. Um, are there any plans to make, add some light or is that something the county or the state takes care of?
We can definitely look at that as part of the project. So adding a street light or a few streetlights along Sagard over I five in particular.
Yeah, that, it's just really, it's dark. I mean, I, I saw someone and you know how we're in Oregon, of course by four o'clock everything is like ten o'clock at night, especially with the times going to change. So I just remember driving once and I barely saw movement and it was somebody walking and it was dark and I thought to myself, wow, it's, it's pretty dark here if I can't, I mean, I have pretty decent vision. So I mean, the person had to move in order for me to actually see there was a, a curve. But there were several people walking. I've seen so many people walk there. And I mean, I don't know where, but it's just where the lighting will go, but it is pretty dark. I just remember that.
Thank you. Thank you for a good comment that stepped us up and we can look at and uh, see how we can make it work.
Andrew Anthony. Oh, yeah, Sagard Street Bridge. I, I go for that a lot. Not at night. I never realized how dark it is. Um, yeah, I have to take, I take like a deep breath before I go over that bridge. Both my ears, but um, so thank you for that one. Um, these are all great projects and um, the one at Avery and Toaltown Sherwood, I'll be so glad not to go through that mud. So that's another, but all these are really great projects. So thank you for your work on them.
Great, thank you.
That's a brush.
I want to thank you too. Um, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness around the bus stop access and the access issues. And also the, I'm trying to um, get my head around how you can increase parking over at the Stone Ridge area. Um, and I really appreciate that uh, you're going to take efforts to communicate with the community there specifically to understand their needs. Um, and especially with all the varying age groups. Um, but those, that, those diversity, equity and inclusion issues around ability and um, people that are sometimes marginalized is uh, really important. So I really appreciate that. And, and as far as the, when you go over the s, the bridge, like state roads, and I do understand why people are there. There's bus stops, there's schools, there's parks. Um, it's better than going over by the whole, all the intersections where the freeway entrance exit ramps are. So it's somewhat safer. And I don't know if everyone knows that you can go underneath over in the back um, pathway to get underneath the free, the freeway by the river all the time either. Um, uh, it took me a while to find that path. So um, does, does the state help us out with money with that stuff too? That's, I guess, since we're helping with it, do they help us too? Because that's my only question, but I do, I like all the projects and I really appreciate it. Oh, and I'm really excited about the garden cor- corner curves coming up. And I also want to say that I appreciate um, the, the bite sized emails that you send out and keeping us up to date. It's um, effort that makes a difference. And so I just want to thank you in person.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Um, we don't have any particular state assistance with these projects. You know, they kind of help us figure out how to get it through the criteria and make sure it works. And we are working on a project that we hope to be able to deliver next year with some more witty finding signage in the downtown and area to help people find that trail connection under the bridge along the river. So thank you very much.
Yeah, man, I would say. May I just, I would um, the, thank you for the parking addition. Thank you, uh, Council of Brooks for bringing that up because uh, when I have attended the Toa Latinos meeting, that's one of the biggest thing they, they talk about the, the lack of parking and they will actually park at the park and then walk to that area to um, because there's no parking in, in that, not a lot of parking around that area. And a lot of, a lot of them have, you know, several vehicles. So they would use the parking at the park that's there and then just walk. Which is still a long, I mean, decent walk for, for you to park somewhere. So thank you for that. And when Council of Brooks brought it up, I'm like, yeah, I do remember that was a need. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sharon, you going to say something?
I was, thank you. My internet appears to be unstable. Um, but uh, while we don't have specific state assistance for these five projects, I will tell you that we do go after uh, grants. We've gone after Safe Routs to School Grants. We've um, you know, we've just done a number of things to try to supplement what, we went for the federal dollars for the sidewalk gap completion project. And um, we, we have, the team keeps their eye out for um, other funding as much as possible to leverage the transportation dollars.
Thank you.
You have questions for Mike or Katie? I just, one project I'll focus in, I focus, uh, focus on the ones, uh, Martin Azzi Avenue at the Fred Meyer driveway. Uh, as you were mentioning, Mike and uh, Katie, that uh, I've seen folks where they get off the bus and that little corner across from the Sherrys has like four or five people and they're huddled together next to that post. Uh, so it's pretty tight there. And same thing with the uh, you know, the sidewalk across the street uh, that leads over to the Starbucks. You can see a lot of people huddled there because it's not the biggest uh, area to stage yourself to cross over the road. The other thing you might want to look at, I don't know if it's in our purview, is I've seen a lot where the uh, the creek area that is behind it will overflow onto the sidewalk. You'll see a lot of mud and stuff after a significant rain that uh, you'll just see a whole bunch of dirt and stuff on there. So I don't know if that's our issue or there's a grading issue or it's just nature that when that thing fills up with water, uh, that whole area gets pretty muddy.
Thank you. Have to check that out.
Yeah.
I do, I do.
You'll probably seen it soon with the rain.
I believe, and Mike can check this out, but I believe that we have a stormwater um, project there that's on the list. I don't know where it is in terms of getting funded, but I think it's from that very reason that floods, that's all stormwater. The, the creek right there um, causes an issue, but I, I believe it's identified on our stormwater master plan.
Anything else for Mike and Katie? I think the list is terrific. Uh, and the outreach you're doing is terrific. And you know, even with these five projects, you're going to go beyond and continue to gather uh, community input on these five projects. And thank you for putting this together for us.
No, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Thanks very much. Bye bye.
Bye bye. All right. Then next thing we have is Mr. Hudson with his quarterly financial report, the first quarter of fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, my name is Don Hudson. I'm the Assistant City Manager here and it's my pleasure to present the first quarter, uh, fiscal year twenty two, quarterly financial report. And I moved my office space here. So hopefully this will all work out okay. And that I don't have something uh, that's not going to work out. Hopefully you can see my presentation there. Yep, I see some nods. All right. There we go. Good. Uh, so the things I'm going to talk about this evening, uh, first, I'll do like how you normally do is our fiscal year budget actual for the first quarter. Uh, then I'll get into our investment report that I did attach it today. I realize it had not been attached to the, to the agenda items. So if you haven't seen that yet, if you didn't go on, if you went on before this afternoon, it is up there now, but I'll, I'll show you that for a one page report. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about ARPA funds and kind of what's been going on and, and some changes or some updates of things that we might use the funds for. And then I want to get into two different pieces of utility bill discussion. Uh, one, I want to give you some updates on some utility bill assistance programs that are out there. Uh, the second is uh, some current learns we have since we haven't been doing water shut offs or late fees. So I want to have a little discussion with you about that this evening. So first to get into the budget actual, again, I'll just highlight those areas that I see some uh, big changes or some things I want to point out. Uh, first I'll go to general fund revenues. And you'll see here that we're trending about the same uh, as last year. Uh, what I want to point out a little bit is that revenue budget is still uh, low compared to normal years, uh, whatever normal is again. Uh, because we had some COVID impacts that are budgeted in there. Typically at this time of year, about nine point six seven percent. Well, they, so that's what we were in nineteen twenty. So you can see how we're a higher percentage received, but also those revenue budget numbers are down a little bit. Uh, we are twenty five percent through, percent through the year, but this is low because our property tax revenue will start coming in in second quarter. We'll start seeing that the end of November, early December. In the road utility fund, uh, the expenditures here, this is the timing of those road maintenance projects. Uh, you typically, we have a pretty robust program and it takes a little bit of time to get those pro, those projects out there started. And that's why, why we're down lower percentage wise this year compared to last, uh, is just the timing of the projects this fiscal year. In the road operating uh, revenues, you'll see we are significantly higher. And while gas tax uh, taxes are coming in a little bit higher than we were seeing in twenty twenty one, the big difference here is we have some fee and lube payments. And you'll see this also when I get to stormwater revenues as well. Uh, the Herman Road Industrial uh, project is, or the uh, development that's going in there. They are responsible for construction of half the street and associated stormwater system. Well, we're not going to have them go in and do just that little strip of road there. It is in the part that is going to have our widening project is coming up here soon. So instead of having them just do part of their, part of the project, they paid us the, the amount that they're responsible for. And then when the whole project is done, I'll, I'll pay for that widening. Uh, and on the expenditure side, I did that, this is, we have less capital projects or the capital budget you see is, is uh, lower than we did in twenty twenty one. Uh, but we are spending more because of, it's just the timing of the projects and the number of projects we have budgeted in this fund. Core area parking, you see we are significantly higher. And this was based upon that we were behind in our billings last year in the first quarter. They had not got out or they had just gone out before the quarter ended. And so we had not seen payments coming in. Uh, this year, the billings actually went out during the first quarter and we have been receiving those, those payments in. And here in the stormwater operating fund, here's that, uh, other part of that in lieu fees that I was talking talking about. Kind of term, I feel like I'm looking sideways even though I'm looking straight at the camera. So. As far as the quarterly, quarter end investment report, uh, the good news here is that we are still uh, receiving a reasonable rate. And I'll go into our interest earnings, the rate here. The two pieces I want to point out here, uh, one is not highlighted here is we still are complying with our policy. Uh, that's the middle box on the, the left hand side there. Uh, the two pieces here, they are maturities at our policy level and then our asset allocation at the policy level. And you'll see that first bar there in the middle of the screen is our one month and less. Uh, and that is our money that's in our state pool, uh, because that is liquid is considered less than one month uh, available. And so that's about sixty three percent of our portfolio, which you'll, you'd see on the right hand side there. Uh, about sixty three percent of our portfolio is in, in the state pool still. I think that as we're starting to see rates bump a little bit, uh, and so we might look to invest a little bit more outside the pool. And here's kind of why. As I've shown this graph before, this is the, where we have been uh, seeing the benefit of going to an investment advisor and diversifying our portfolio. Uh, the black line there is the core funds. So those are monies that we have been uh, investing out outside of the state pool for just our general fund and all the other funds of the city. The uh, orangish line there, the, the kind of the top, that's our bond proceeds. So we, we invest the bond proceeds uh, for the transportation bonds separately. And you'll see that that is still maintaining a pretty good interest rate. We're at about a one point four percent yield on the, on the investments in that program right now. On the core funds, we're at about just over one percent, just under one point one. And you see the, the state pool, they've dropped down to point five, five percent during this quarter. Uh, last week, we just found out that it's actually dropping now to point four, five percent. So that's continuing to drop. We are starting to see uh, rates in the diversification area going up. So I think we'll start investing a little bit more there. Uh, we are at a point seven, eight, eight investment for our total portfolio, which before when we did just the state pool, right now would be only be earning point four, five percent. So we're almost double of portfolio as a whole by the diversification going with the investment advisor. So we have received our uh, certification of our property tax rolls for this upcoming year. You, you recall that I budgeted three percent, yeah, for uh, property taxes. We came in at four point seven, uh, almost four point seven, five percent. We are about five percent in Washington County. We actually ended up under three percent in Clackamas County. And the way the property tax system in Oregon works, works on the, on the residential side, it's basically going to go up three percent, which is kind of why we always figured that the three percent, it's not a given. It's not a guarantee, but that's typically where you're going to end up at least, and then depending on your growth. Clackamas County came in lower uh, be, because of there's one retirement center there. They're, they're finding that retirement centers are there's one retirement center there, they're finding that retirement centers are dropping in value. Uh, they're, and they're noticing it not only in Clackamas County, but around other areas. So we had one in Clackamas County that dropped. Uh, but, but other part of property taxes are personal property on our industrial and our commercial users. They all think like, like Lamb Research has all their equipment. We get property taxes based upon those values. I believe this one is the hospital, that that, the equipment depreciated, the value went down and they had not been reinvesting in this last year. And so that actually dropped us below three percent. The reason I'm showing you this graph back to tw- twenty eleven, twenty twelve, is this is the last time we had the kind of the economy, the way was, if we started that recession and everything we had going on it back then, you can see that we were down under two percent for two straight years. And there, again, that was based upon in our Washington County industrial areas, the, the prop, the equipment depreciated. That's something I want to keep an eye on, but the, the pandemic, not sure how many of those companies are reinvesting in their, in their equipment. I did find out that Lamb in one of their buildings did just put in a bunch of new equipment, so that will help us there. And I'm going to ask Jonathan Taylor to help me do some outreach to see kind of where that's at. If that were to happen and we saw that kind of a trend again, it, it won't be for a few years out, but it is something that I want, want to kind of keep an eye on, uh, going forward. If you remember, the property tax system is based upon an assessed value, not a real market value. So as we've seen, how home prices just skyrocketing, we're not benefiting from, from that. We're still seeing that three percent growth on a, on a residential property. And so, you know, those factors, even though we're seeing, uh, value is considerably going up, we're not seeing, uh, the assessed value is doing the same, has that same record. Some other time I'll spend two hours explaining the property tax system to you. No. Cool. What this leads into is our fiscal health model update. You know, the blue line there is our ongoing revenues, the red line there is ongoing expenditures. And you can see that we've been in a positive alignment, uh, for a few years in the current fiscal year. We're in a, uh, positive alignment and we're projecting a positive alignment in fiscal year twenty three. As usual, we start seeing that trend, uh, differently. We are projecting with some conservative projections, a, uh, negative alignment at back out in fiscal year twenty four, but it's manageable. And that's typically what we've talked about, when we see those, those first year or two, is how manageable is that? And given our history, I believe that's manageable. That is also the first year of new curves rates. Again, it'll take effect, uh, which you see a little bit higher spike there. So it's something we want to keep an eye on. Uh, and I want to really be, you know, monitoring because we've got, you know, what I just talked about with the property taxes, as well as some other things. Uh, as I sit here today, I believe it's manageable, but it is something we want to keep an eye on in the next two budget cycles. Speaking of reports, uh, the, I presented to you before the Government Finance Office Association, the three award programs that we participate in. And because we have received, uh, the award in all three of those, they are now calling us triple crown winners. And that means we have won that. So you can see Lisa Thorpe, she's responsible for a number of, a number of pieces of these. And so she modeled the crowns that they actually sent us, which reminded me of going to Burger King as a kid and getting in the Burger King crown. This one's golden and it has GFOA on it, so it's a little bit deeper closer to my heart than, uh, the Burger King one would be. Uh, but just to give you an idea, the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, we've gotten for twenty nine straight years. The popular annual financial report, reporting award, we've received two straight years. And the distinguished budget award we've received for eight straight years. And we think that all our, our upcoming documents are award winning documents as well. So moving on to the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, so when I was in front of you, I believe it was in August, we talked about the guiding principles. And these are the guiding principles that I presented and the council agreed with, uh, lining with your visions and priorities, uh, looking at one time programs and projects, leveraging multiple funding sources. And then we've had a couple of discussions this evening that talked about multiple funding sources. Uh, innovative, proactive, strategic, seeking partnerships and collaboration and the coordination local. The investment areas we talked about was infrastructure, and this was one that I was looking back over my notes that pretty much every one of you rated pretty high as a priority, was in our infrastructure. Things that we talked about was water infrastructure, support affordable housing, and then improvements to outdoor spaces. Supporting in those community based organizations and nonprofits in our area. Assisting households where we find gaps in other funding. Uh, doing some small business and impacted industry assistance, looking at our revenue replacement. And then again, the coordination with local partners. So to give you a little bit of an update on some, some of those areas, uh, the water infrastructure to support affordable housing. This is a water line we would need to have in place, uh, for the SEPA project. And so if that land use decision is successful, it is something the city could contribute funds to construct that, construct that extension of our water line. It's about a million dollar project. And so it is something that we are, uh, keeping our eye on and recommending, uh, that we look at, uh, if that land use decision is successful. The second area is the, it improvements to the outdoor spaces. And under the, under the guidance for the affordable or the, uh, American Rescue Plan Act, you can use state and local recovery funds for the following purposes for outdoor spaces and parks. One is to improve spaces and areas that have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. And this is provision refers to projects that are in those qualified census tracts, which we have one in a, in a previous presentation I showed you the boundaries of the RQCT. And so we can improve park space that will benefit the health and wellness of those communities. The second area is maintenance and upkeep issues that because of the increased use of parks during the pandemic, so we can address those issues for allowable expenses, uh, to, to address those issues. The first one, uh, you heard Ross talk this evening about the Stone Ridge Park renovation. That is a, would be an, uh, appropriate use of art funds. It is something that we would use, you know, look for other funding sources. And we could utilize ARPA funds for that, fill in those gaps of other parts of that project that would not be, be funded elsewhere. So it's one of those areas that we're recommending that the council, uh, look at. And we keep an eye on what that gap funding is and fund that as well. Uh, some other areas that we would look at again in our parks and so forth are what projects might be available, uh, to be funded under ARPA. I did, listening to Mike McCarthy just a minute ago, talking about the, the traffic safety project in the Stone Ridge area. Uh, that is something that we might be able to look at, uh, potentially for ARPA funds as well, because it is in the QCT. And we would be, uh, possibly be able to look at that. So I was going to talk to him more about that and, uh, recommend maybe looking at that as well. Some of the other areas that are being looked at, so give you some updates, coordinating with local partners. Uh, Washington County is taking a lead with the economic development managers around the county, uh, creating some economic development, uh, proposals to helping out the businesses in, in the county. Uh, one thing they're looking at right now is a revolving loan fund, and they're still working on the details. Uh, I think we're supposed to hear more at meeting next month. And so as I get more information on that, I'll come back to you. Uh, the other piece is a community, your countywide community engagement process, really looking at how do we reach out to the, you know, picking at that equity lens, how do we reach out to some of those underserved communities? And so the county is talking about putting together a team of, the city is countywide, figure out how we can partner to do that and benefit all the different areas. And Megan George on our staff is, is one that'll be heavily involved, uh, with the county and that. We just had an update or the kickoff kind of that discussion just a couple of weeks ago. So again, that's still in the, in the development process, stages. Uh, the other area would be assistance to households, kind of fill, finding out where those state and local programs are and how do we fill gaps? Uh, so we'll continue to look at that as a, as an opportunity here. And one area is the utility billing assistance. So there are actually three programs that we're looking at, keeping an eye on. Uh, first is, so the state was allocated funds for utility billing assistance directly under ARPA and directly to the state to administer a program. That program is the low income household water assistance program or LEWAP. That again is the funds directly allocated to the state. The state has then done an allocation at all the different counties through into the community action, uh, organizations in the, in the, around the state of ours, of course, being Community Action of Washington County. This will be rolled out and they're talking about sometime after the first of the year, they're working on all the agreements. So the state would do an agreement with, uh, Community Action. The Community Action would have an agreement with the city and all, all the water utility providers. And then it would be a low income program, uh, that they would offer assistance. This I think is going to act a little bit like our CARES Act funding was. So my concern is a little bit here is how many of our residents would end up taking advantage. It still is an onerous application process, um, but hopefully we can direct people to that, that, that meeting. Another program we found out recently, and this one is up and running, is the Oregon Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And again, it's rental assistance, but what they do offer as well, utility assistance. And this is for renters only. So I think this could be, and that would have, I, I, we just found out recently, I haven't found out for sure, but one of the gaps we have found in like the CARES Act funding and other programs is those, uh, multifamily properties that the, we have one meter, so the landlord gets the bill. They pay it and then they bill out to the, to their residents, to the renters. And the renters may be behind on those payments to their landlord, but they're not eligible for any of these other programs because they don't owe us money. And a lot of these other programs are for assistance of that you have a bill from the water utility directly. So I believe this is one of those programs that could potentially help renters in that area. And it is a program that, uh, Kathy Hayes on my staff is directing people to already, uh, now that we know about it. The third program is a program through that Washington County, with their ARPA funds, has allocated two million dollars to do a utility assistance program in the county. This will be different than the CARES Act funding, where the CARES Act funding was, uh, based upon, had low income restrictions and other restrictions on it. This would not come with those restrictions. Uh, we're looking to create a very simple application process to try to reach, uh, everybody that needs that, that assistance. The, we've been, we've met with Clean Water Service a couple of times. We have a small group of, uh, representatives from three of the city's, uh, financial, uh, managers, as well as the other special districts to help create what that program would look like. How would we get allocated out to the cities? What would that application process be? You know, how do we get the funding out to the people who really need it? Uh, we're really hopeful that this will be, uh, a simple way to help those that have been impacted by COVID that aren't eligible or being, uh, caught in some of these other programs. Uh, so we're thinking that probably another couple of months away, by the time the program gets set up, we get to the process, uh, and then get the, the word out and start, uh, helping people out with that assistance as well. But, uh, we do have, you know, we are seeing some programs out there and we will be pointing our, just our customers to those programs. So that brings me to my last, uh, topic this evening, and I wanted to have a discussion with you about our delinquencies. Uh, as you remember that we suspended late fees and shut offs back in April of twenty twenty. Uh, we have been continually to send out delinquent notices, communicating with people, trying to get them to communicate back to us. Uh, but we're still seeing that our shut off list is kind of continuing to grow. Uh, right now, if we were to shut off at the end of September, if we would have done shut offs, we had, we would have shut up a hundred and sixty eight accounts and about a hundred and six thousand dollars worth of delinquent bills. As you see from this, other providers have resumed shut offs in late fees. Hillsborough is the most recent, and I want to talk a little bit about their program, because that's something that I think would be beneficial for us if we decide to go down that path. Uh, but you can see back in August of twenty twenty, Wilsonville started shutting people off already. There are a number of these that have been doing it for a number of months. Beaverton and Cornelius have, have not started, uh, back up yet. Our concern is the number of accounts we have, the dollar amounts and, and the balances. How do we reach those people? We don't want this to continue to grow for people, and that becomes completely non manageable. In talking with these other cities, the other thing we're finding is there's a mix. It's not just people that are impacted by COVID. People, and we know this from our history, that people would wait for that door hanger before they would make their payment. It was like their reminder. And so we're not getting, we're not doing door hangers, we're not doing any of those kind of things. And so we know there's a mix out there, but we want to reach the people, we want to offer our assistance. And this is, you know, one way to kind of narrow that list down to the people and figure out who really is impacted and how do we assist, assist them. But to give you a little background of what we have been doing, I mean, we haven't, it's just, it's not like we just tell people we're not shutting your water off and then, you know, we'll come back to you in a year and tell you how much money you owe us. We are, uh, sending the monthly bills usual, and that has the outstanding balance, the prior balance. We are sending delinquent notices like we used to, and the language, it may be hard to read on the screen. Uh, but on our delinquent notice, we've added two different things, uh, now under this environment. One is the city of Twalton understands the hardship residents and local businesses are facing right now as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. In response to this, the city has temporarily suspended all non-payment disconnections and late fees until further notice. To bring your account current, we ask you to utilize one of the following payments. We lose them? And then the second question is order a range of payment plan that would help them keep their balances manageable, so that all of a sudden they don't get hit with extremely high costs. We've also been making phone calls. Uh, Kathy on my staff has been, uh, rotating, trying to make, uh, placing phone calls to get ahold of people. What we're finding now is there, she's not getting responses any longer. Uh, she's been sending emails, we're, we're just not getting, getting the responses. As I said, our goal to all this is not to just start shutting people off, to shut people off. Uh, it, our goal is to get more outreach, to help those that, uh, need the help. Um, but also start, you know, having people pay that have the ability to pay. So we have discussed, uh, resuming shut offs for those delinquent accounts. Our proposal to do this would be an extensive outreach process. And I just said, I mentioned the city of Hillsborough, uh, just, they're the most recent one. And they're, they've gone for a couple of months worth of time to, to communicate and outreach, and outreach. And as I said, what they have found is that this has been very helpful to get their delinquencies down, but to help the people that need the help and also, uh, keep everything in a manageable. So what we would look at is putting the information on our website. We would, on our monthly bill, we have a message area. We'd put the message on there that we're, uh, starting up. We'd be putting flyers in the bills. We would use social media. We would also, you know, find other ways to communicate. There's one other way that all of a sudden slipped my mind. Uh, oh, uh, speaking of door hangers, because we found that that wasn't effective before. We just, we don't, the, the crews to go out and do door hangers and have a hundred and sixty accounts would take them a number of days every month. Because typically we have about fifty, sixty or so door hangers, and we get to have shut offs usually in the single digits because of the work staff does. Uh, again, the numbers are getting out of control that we don't have the ability to do that on a monthly basis. But what we would do in this case is, is put together a communication door hanger to get out and have crews go out over about a one week period and put those on the, those delinquent accounts. Again, have that one extra piece of information, uh, to try to get the commu- communication with the, with us. We would then have a process in place for, uh, payment plans. We, we, again, we know that it, people just can't pay if they've got a three hundred dollar utility bill, that they can't just turn around and pay three hundred dollars in some of these cases. But we would work with them over a period of time to pay that down. Uh, what I, you know, we don't want to be the misers here. We want to work with people, want to help them out. So our goal would be to start the communication and our proposal would be to begin shut offs in February. So that's a few months down the road, it's, it's after the holidays, gives us plenty of time to communicate and see what are, what, uh, what's out there, what we can do to help. If, if it looks like this is a bigger issue than, uh, or more difficult than what I, I'd come back to you, but what, that's what we're, we're looking at with that. And I think the questions, first question I have for you is, are you supportive of this recommendation of going forward and starting down this process? And the second question that I'm looking for is whether you have any concerns that we should be addressing in this. So with that, I would definitely like to hear the, the answers to those questions and talk a little bit about that. But also I'm open to any questions you have on, on anything else I address this evening. So I will stop sharing, so you can see everybody and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Don. Questions for Don. I see Council Brooks hands up and then Counsel, right after Counsel Brooks.
Thank you for the great presentation, Don. I don't know if I can even get back to the beginning of it. There's a lot of information. But as I was thinking about the, the water bill situation and the assistance programs, and some of them aren't even operating yet, it sounds like. So I guess my question is, in addition to helping people with payment plans, is there a way that we support them in either the application process and knowing the resources that they could have for access to those programs, whether it's through the county? And can we help them distinguish which program would work? And I realize that would be extra lifting, but I'm also wondering, even with the, the manpower for the door hangers and the things that we know are effective, if ARPA money can be used to help? Any way that we can make this process easier for the city to help people that are not using late water shut offs as a, as a reminder? I mean, the people that are at risk of losing services.
Yes, absolutely. We are going to do everything we can to help people through those, the assistance programs. And that's why we're really pushing on the countywide one to make it very simple. The goal is to be, we would, under ARPA, we'll have to have some certification likely that it is COVID related. But we want to make that, you know, maybe it's a checkbox. I mean, we don't know what that exactly would be, but we want to make that simple. We don't, we don't have to do the, the income verification for that program. And so not having to go through that whole process that people would have to go through under the LEWAP and through Community Action. But there are people that, that may be their best avenue. And going through Community Action is beneficial for some people because they, they have other assistance programs besides just utility billing. The energy assistance, so that is a utility bill, but also other assistance. So, but we will help point people that way. If there's anything we can do to help them with that process, we will. But, you know, that one's a little bit harder for us to help because it's a process outside of our control. But yes, we'll do everything we can to have the applications available easily that they can take and fill out. But definitely the, the countywide one, we're really hopeful that that's very simple that either we could, you know, do something electronically for them or just make that work.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And I also, you know, thinking back to your, the list of projects too of suggestions, I just want to say thank you also for thinking of the, the Stone Ridge community around focus areas. I agree with that a lot and I think that idea with Mike McCarthy is a great idea. So, and I just, and congratulations on all your years of being award winning. So it just helps. It helps, I'm sure, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm sure all of us feel just that doing our job, it makes it so much easier. So that, that you do such a great job yourself and that, that you've earned the trust of us and our community. So just thanks, thanks, Don.
Thank you.
I don't know how long your, I don't know how long your beard is going to get.
Well, you know, I had to move some of the hair from the top of my head down to my, on my face. I mean, that other picture I had, I had more hair on my head, more hair on my face. But yeah, it's, it's starting to get a little longer. But yeah, I was going to wear the crown, but I was afraid it would slide off.
Well, I thought maybe you were waiting until the Stanley Cup playoffs.
Yeah, that may be the beard thing, you never know.
All right, Counsel Pratt and then Counsel Ray.
I wanted to start by saying, leave it to some budget conscious accountants and finance people to come up with cheap, you know, but. Anyway, I was wondering, going back to where you were showing that line somewhere in 2023, where our expenses are going to exceed our revenues, is that just because of the purge? Or what other large factors are causing that?
It's, it's typical where our expenditures typically grow a little faster than our revenues. But again, you know, then we, we manage within that. But that's typically why, especially in the outer years, you see that happen.
Okay, and then I wanted to say the same thing as Counsel Brooks, like the water infrastructure and then the Stone Ridge Park are both great ideas. And then I was on the, so on the assistance to households, basically you're just going to route them to the county programs. Is that correct?
Depending on how that, we haven't, it hasn't been fully decided exactly how that would run. One piece, it may be that it gets allocated directly to us, or we may get an allocation and then we would administer that, our share within those guidelines, but that hasn't been decided yet. You know, again, the, the subcommittee met a week or, or week and a half ago and they're hopefully going to meet in the next couple of weeks again. But that's still being put together, but those exact details. But in some way, we would be administering whether we actually have the monies or we would front it, get it back. But the actual details haven't been worked out.
Gotcha. And then, yeah, then my big concern as far as the water bill thing is just the people that probably can barely afford to pay their monthly bill and then they're going to get hit with probably months of payments in arrears. It, it's going to be overwhelming and I don't know how some of those people can ever pay it off.
And, and that's what we want to find out. I mean, we, we really want to get a handle on those so that we can assist them and figure out how.
Yeah, to get them a current.
But, you know, and we're not at, we're not suggesting at this point, starting at the late fees. And, you know, at some point we'll talk about how we do the shut off fees that we have. But, you know, if we're not shutting people off because we've worked out a payment plan, then that's not getting added to their, to the bill like in normal times that was happening.
And just last, I wanted to comment that I think February is really nice time.
Counsel Ray.
Yeah, Don, um, thank you for the report. So did you mention that these are not just people's homes, but they're also businesses?
Yes, there are some businesses on there as well. I don't have that breakdown in front of me, but we, there, it is not just residential.
And there are also apartment complexes, big apartment complexes, a lot of the tenants don't pay water. Mostly the, the owner of the property pays the water.
So there are very few, yeah, there are very few on the shut off, if any, that are the landlords of the complexes because it's one bill and they are, they are making the payment. And that's been the problem of trying to figure out when they're billing, then the, the renter, how do we reach out to those people? Because that's outside of us, because we're, it's, the landlord's paying the bill to us. So there's not a delinquent account. So there's very few of any apartment complexes that are on the delinquent list because they are staying current.
Right, well, in case they're charging the tenant, but then they're not doing their part of paying their bill. And that also would include business parks, such as like, you know, the ones that we, where Aladdin is. I'm not saying, I just, I don't know, they're being also, they're being billed by the landlord, but they're not. And then when we shut down, if we shut down the water, then they're affected and it's not their fault. So I, I was just thinking about that. The other, on the, on the delinquent, on the people that have already resumed, the, the cities, maybe we can reach out to them and find out how they did it. Or like, for instance, Hillsborough just did it this October 2021. Maybe they, they have ideas of how we can, they, they have a bigger population. So how they, how they're going to do it, I think sometimes getting ideas from other, other cities, local jurisdictions will help us. I'm sure they have, Hillsborough is a big city, so I'm sure they've had a great plan to, to execute and find out how they did it. And if there's a percentage that still won't do it anyway, I mean, no matter what. But I, I, I do agree, people need to at least voice their, their concern and saying, hey, I, I can't because of COVID. Or, I mean, you know, it's just out of courtesy to say, I've received your notices, but right now, you know, I, I can't pay it or I need payment. I think, I think it's just, it's just taking that, that responsibility, you know, saying, I have seen the bills, but if they don't call you back or they don't respond and they just go silent, I don't think that's also a good thing. Both parties need to be responsible in communicating what the situation is. Especially if they've gone through some layoffs or they've been through some really hardships throughout, in the last year and a half. They need to voice it up and they need to let us know what's going on. I mean, I think we have staff that speak Spanish, they speak English, they speak other languages and we can help out. But going silent is not also a good thing from the other party. So that's my opinion on this.
And, and we, so we have reached out to Hillsborough and we have gotten all the information that they've done because we, in talking with others, we really liked how they went about doing it and the communication methods. And so we have all the information that they've done and then we're actually modeling what we want to do based upon their program. Because I think it was probably one of the more, did the most outreach, probably had the most success in reaching the people who needed the assistance.
Yeah, I can imagine. But thank you, thank you for doing this.
Counsel Saka.
Thank you. So, and I apologize if I missed this, but I think that the proposed being shut offs in February seems reasonable. But when, when was that outreach going to start? And I, all these ideas I think are great as far as the, the excessive outreach is going to be done. Just to make sure that we do give everybody enough time. And I guess to go along with that, are all of these going to, this campaign all going to start at the same time?
Yeah, so we're, my staff has already started working on a timeline and a plan. And I will then, what's, if, if I get the go ahead with counsel, then I will start talking more internally. I'll get with Megan about the social media and, you know, timelines for, you know, those kinds of communications. My staff will be ready to start the communications internally and when we can put it in the bills and all that. So yes, we'll start in the next few weeks if, if not soon.
Other questions? All right, well, I've got one. Why February?
We didn't want to go out, you know, too far, but, you know, we could start it, you know, December 1st is too soon. January 1st, you're running into the holidays and it's, you don't want to shut someone off potentially right after Christmas and the new year. So that we figured February was a few months down the road, it gave us enough time to do the outreach and then we'd be ready to, to start that process in February. So that, we just kind of backed up from how much time we thought the outreach would need and what would take to be a good outreach plan.
My, my concern is seeing, you know, we just extended the 60 day eviction moratorium to 90 days. Is that when the county does spin up this program, what's going to be the process and how long it's going to take to get through that process? And that is February going to be too soon? I know the county doesn't work at a very fast pace. They, most of them move very glacially. So I don't know when they're going to launch this program, when they're going to have their act together to start funding it. That's my concern is February might, based on if we're relying on the county to disburse funds directly to the rate payer or if they go the other route where they, you know, send the money to the City of Twolton for our water folks to divvy up and try to prevent the shut offs. It just, I'm a little nervous about picking February until I hear how the county program is going to run, who's going to run it and how quickly going to process applications. Until I hear that, I'm kind of nervous about February, to be honest. I just started, Counsel Hillier's hand went up, I was chatting. Go ahead, Cindy.
You're muted. Thank you, thank you. I, I had the same concern. I, if I understood you correctly, the low income, the LIHWA, you say it a lot better than I could, seems to be in place. The Oregon Emergency Rental Assistance Program, if I understood, is in place currently. But the Washington County program is not. And so is, is that, do I understand that correctly?
Well, so it probably wasn't as clear as you guys could have been. So the, the county has allocated the money already and it's, they've allocated, Clean Water Services is the one who went to the county and asked for the money. So it's been allocated to Clean Water Services. They have been meeting with all the cities and the other utility districts already to talk about how it would be administered. So it's just really a matter of the details of it. Honestly, I think that program will likely be up and running before the LEWAP will be actually be up and running through Community Action because that is a state program and you think the county moves slow, the state can move even slower. But all the details of that being worked out and it's more restrictive because of the income requirements and everything else. This other one, I think once we could figure out if it's going to be allocated, all those little details or we can roll it out pretty quickly. So I, I think that by the first of the year, that program will be up and running and then it'll be, we'll be, we'll have our hands directly in that one. And so we'll be able to process that pretty fast. So that's why I'm not concerned about the February date. But that being said, if these things are, are kind of dragging along, then, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll react accordingly. If things just aren't coming together where February is too soon, then, you know, then we will back off a little bit.
That, my concern has been, you know, biggest, when I asked about people forgot rental assistance with Community Action and Street Action has had the staff up. As of what, two weeks ago, they were still two people short, but they've gotten there. It's just a matter of getting through to Community Action, getting in the hopper. You know, so they're running the rental assistance program, they've been trying to run the water utility. But I just, I'm just, just nervous about February. I'd write the, you know, if things gel together as quickly as you think, Don, that's terrific. But I'd like, I'd like to have a little leeway that, like you just alluded to, that if we see things aren't coming together like we think, that we can move that February shut off date.
What I, what we'd like to do is communicate, starting in February, this would happen. And then, you know, we're not saying that on February 1st, we're going to shut your water off. So our communications would be, starting in February, the city will be starting shut offs again. And here's the steps to what helps. So yeah, we can be.
I got the impression you got, starting February, that you should start closing taps.
No, I'm not, I'm not that mean.
All right, I saw Counsel Brooks and then Counsel President Gray.
I, I was just gonna, I, I guess I had, the mayor's question brought up a question for me as well. I agree, if things are not operating properly, I would also be, I'm like, okay with the plan, but if things, if those services aren't available. And I guess I'm still confused about the different programs for different customers. Because I do think the renters with Community Action, you know, and, and I know that they also provide like legal assistance around evictions and that there's a whole cluster and, and different group of people that could really benefit from them. And, and I know how it is to be doing resources and referrals, it can be complicated. And like the mayor said, there's a lot of different timelines for different programs. So I'm just curious, I understand the desire to stick with one program and I think it would be great if they funded us and we, you know, sometimes it takes all that extra bureaucracy step out of it and it's actually cheaper than it would be to try to have everybody jump through the hoops and then give it back. But I do, I am hearing, and my concern is that there's different types of customers that we have that would be in the rears, whether it's businesses, renters, homeowners and, and different reasons. And how, how are we coordinating that? And could some of our ARPA funds help? And could some of our ARPA funds help to make sure that we do a process? It's really, um, you know, um, tailored and supportive in the ways that the residents that live here and the businesses that operate here need. I guess, you know, I think about it like that. Um, and I don't know if, if you've thought about it, um, I'm sure you've thought about it. But I mean, I don't, I'm not clear if we're referring to just one preferred program or if we have all these programs in mind.
So we will communicate all programs that we know about. And there will be a flyer coming out sometime in the future on that LEWAP program with the state, uh, that will be through community action and we will pass those flyers out as well. So, yeah.
And then what if people need help with filling this stuff out? Or they, do we have numbers to give to them?
Yeah, I mean, we point them to community action. That's the best we can do because we don't, we don't know all the different pieces of that. I mean, we will point people there and if there's anything we can assist with, we will. But we've got to kind of be careful because of all the different pieces of that that we just don't know.
Okay.
The reason, I, I think the reason why the most successful, the, the best one for us will be is the, the one that, the, the $2 million that came through the county is because it is, it would be much more simplistic. And there's, and all of us in the county have a say in how we're gonna set that program up. Clean Water Services just isn't deciding. We've got them to, to have three of us. Uh, we got someone from Beaverton, Hillsborough and Cornelius. So we have someone else from that smaller sized government, uh, to kind of say, here's what works. We don't want it to be administratively nightmare. We don't want it to be a nightmare for the people applying. And so this gives us the opportunity of those of us that have our boots on the ground to help put the program together to say, this is how it could be easiest to help our, our residents. So that's the idea and that's why I think that one will be the most successful of all of reaching more of our, our residents. Now, if we're seeing there's still a gap, you know, that's one of the things that we've talked about in your priorities and so forth is, if there, if are there gaps, then we could potentially fill with our ARPA funds.
Okay.
So yes, I mean, those are the things that we, we, you know, we are looking to make this as easy for peoples as we possibly can.
Thank you. Thanks for indulging me and doubling back there.
Can I just add one thing to that before, um, Counsel, Counsel President Grimes goes? There is also this communications group that is out of, that the county is putting together. And my understanding of that group is to do something of what you were just talking about, Counselor Brooks, is to communicate in a holistic way about the different programs and, um, and doing outreach in a, in a simple and a culturally, um, appropriate way. And we have a, a team member on that.
That's great news. Thank you.
It's President Grimes, then Counsel Hillier.
Yeah, um, two things. First of all, um, and I apologize if somebody mentioned this already and somehow it may have gone over my head, but can we separate the dates, like a commercial date and then a residential date? Because, you know, I'd be, I'm fine with like a January cutoff date, if you want to use that term, for like, um, commercial accounts. And then, you know, having a more gentle, you know, gracious timeline for residential that may be able to apply for some of these, uh, programs. Especially because, you know, in February, we tend to get really inclement weather and we may end up with the situation where people are, you know, they having difficulty with their services. Maybe we're, they're homebound and not able to access, you know, fresh water at the store or something like that. So yeah, February makes me, it's always such a difficult month. It always makes me feel for people in that month. But yeah, I mean, I'd be perfectly happy moving up the deadline for commercial accounts. Cause.
We're hopeful in this process of this communication that we're really gonna get a feel for what, what the needs are and where we're gonna need assistance. Uh, if we don't put a date out there, then whatever, where we're finding is we're not getting the communication back to us. And so my recommendation was to stick with a in February date. And hopefully the people that contact us that need more of that assistance would be the people that we're gonna work out a payment plan or we're gonna help them point towards the, towards the assistance programs. Uh, you know, if, if we go through all this and we're just finding that that's not realistic, then I'll be back in front of you saying, here's the update. In fact, maybe when next quarterly report, I'll have an update for you on our, but I will come back to you with some updates just to let you know what's happening. And then if we need to, you know, again, we can adjust. Then this is set in stone. Our recommendation is we put out the, the, the date of February, starting in February. And as we do all our outreach and communication, uh, we adapt accordingly.
Counsel Hillier, you had your hand up?
I do. Thank you. Um, what about our residents and businesses in Clackamas County? Is there support coming from Clackamas the same way?
There's not, but we will get the same, uh, we'll, it's, we're gonna get the same assurance of the countywide program that I got under the CARES Act, that our Clackamas County residents would be covered under that. We're not gonna have a dividing line, uh, for our, our residents on that.
So it sounds like we're okay with February with saying that's the date we might start them. And we'll get a update, uh, what, three months before we go full bore with this. Um, are folks okay with that? Okay, it's okay. So it looks like your plan is approved, Don, and yeah, keep us up to date. And if you need, uh, any help with communications with politicos at Clean Water Services or Washington County or anywhere you need help, let us know. Uh, cause, uh, water, sewer, electricity and heat are gonna be super poor over the winter. And I'm, I don't want to cut off anybody's, uh, lifelines to that. Uh, we just have to work it out and figure out how we can get it paid. And discussions, the mayor's, it's been always an ongoing discussion at the mayor's about cutoffs. And I know Cornelius has significant numbers of people in the rears and they're really looking at their ARPA money to fill that hole, uh, because it's significant in Cornelius.
Yeah. As I said, we do have their finance directors, one of the three on the subcommittee. We purposely included Ellie because we thought her insight would be very valuable to this. So we will, uh, we will definitely be communicating, we'll be back in, in touch with you. I think we're good right now on the Politico side, uh, because it has been allocated and we have a really good communication, uh, window open right now with people at Clean Water that are involved in this. The only place I really need your help, if, if the need is more than $2 million and we need Clean Water to go back to the county, I think the county will be open to adding to that. But if we get any pushback, then you'll be the first call I make.
Oh yeah, I'll be in touch with, uh, what Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Harrington immediately.
They are supportive of this and I think they would be supportive if they found countywide need was, was larger.
Exactly.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you need, Don?
I got everything I need for now and if there's no other questions, I'll let you move on to your next agenda.
All right. Thank you. All right. So moving on, our next agenda item is consideration of recommendations from the county. The county, I'm counting it in my head now. For the council committee on advisory appointments, we have some, uh, reappointments. Who's gonna lead the discussion here from the, uh, advisory committee? Looks like we have four TLAC people. Valerie, Bridget?
I, I thought Counsel was gonna do this.
Yeah, I understood Counsel Reyes was funny.
Okay. Counsel Reyes.
Hi, yes, I'm just downloading my, that part of the agenda. Thank you. Um, I just wanna, uh, announce our new, um, cause this is, these are council committee, uh, advisory appointments. And, um, so we go by CCAA or I think there's another name up there that I cannot remember for the life of me how to pronounce it. But, uh, basically we, uh, between we valor, uh, Counsel Pratt, Counsel Brooks and myself, we interviewed several individuals, um, from our community. These are all volunteers and I'm very proud to announce their names. You give me a second and see if this thing actually downloads. But I want to make sure I'm not missing anyone. And, um, we are very, come on, come on, sorry. Proud to announce, um, these committee members from, that we, that we have appointed. Um, Marcus Young, Tuolton Library Advisory Committee, he's reappointed to another term. Um, Nicholas Shiler or Schiller, um, Tuolton Library Advisory Committee, reappointed as well. Catherine King, uh, Tuolton Library Advisory Committee, she's a student. Um, Ashley Payne, Tuolton Library Advisory Committee. Uh, she's a new, uh, partial term, um, kind of spiring, I don't know how to say it, but it's basically, um, her, somebody, she's kind of ending somebody's term. Is that, is that what I, the partial term means? So someone stopped and then she's coming in to end that term. Um, so very happy to announce them and they are our new, uh, committee members that, um, the three of us selected and after they go through a rigorous interview process. Just kidding. Now we, we enjoy looking at everybody and enjoy talking to everybody. And I really am proud, really, um, to appoint these individuals. Uh, they're passionate, they love what they do, they bond. And, um, it's just a really, uh, impressive community that we have. Thank you very much and welcome.
So Counsel Pratt.
I just wanted to really quickly say, one thing we heard this time with the reappointed peoples is they, um, we asked them what they like about serving on the community and Jerry Yam's name came up several times. So kudos to Jerry.
Counsel Brooke.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Reyes and Counsel Pratt. I also just want to say that, to thanks to all the people that applied, we always have more applicants than we can fill. And so the interest in serving the community is big. And I wanted to add to what Counsel Pratt said around. Uh, another thing that I heard was that, um, the reappointments really enjoyed each other on the committee and being part of a community. And I think during this time, it's, uh, especially important to people. So, um, I, I'm sorry that we can't outpoint everybody, but I, I'm really grateful for all the great work that our volunteers do for the city.
So we need a motion to approve the recommendation? All right. So Counsel, all right. We have a motion and second to approve the recommendations and a discussion of some motions. All right. Counsel Pratt. Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes, of course.
Counsel President Grimes.
Yes, thank you guys for talking.
I also, yes, thank you to our volunteers. All right. So I think that wraps up our general business. We had no items removed from consent. Are there any council communications this evening? All right. With that, I'll then adjourn our Tuolton City Council meeting and we'll have to shift gears and, uh, I'll call in to order our, uh, October 25th, Tuolton Development Commission meeting. Welcome commissioners. Uh, we are now in order and first thing we have is our public comment. This is an opportunity for folks to comment on things that are not on our agenda as the commission. You have up to three minutes to discuss your thoughts and ideas with the commission. Is there anyone at the poll center or in the Zoom meeting who would like to address the commission? I don't think so, cause it looks like we're down to slim pickings here in the Zoom meeting. So that brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is voted, uh, is all those items that are considered routine that we will vote on as one body. Uh, city councils have the opportunity to remove an item from consent if they'd like to have it discussed later tonight. Are there any items on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to have removed? All right. So I have one item, uh, on the consent agenda. I probably just did that in reverse, but item number one, consideration approval of the Tuolton Development Commission meeting minutes of June 28th, 2021. Everyone said, I didn't see anybody who wanted that removed from consent. So I have a motion to, uh, adopt the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
All right. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion of the motions? I gotta change my verbiage. Commissioner Pratt. Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Hillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes.
Yes.
Commissioner Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. That brings us to general business. We have one item of general business tonight. Consideration of Resolution Number 630 dash 21, authorizing the TDC administrator to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Tuolton. Is this, uh, Sherlyn?
I'm happy to, um, talk about it unless Don was, but I don't see him on camera. So, um, this is a compl- a complimentary, um, agreement that was on the, uh, the council meeting. So, um, as you know, uh, the development commission has money and the, um, the city, or the city has the staff to do the projects. And so, um, um, we are entering into an agreement between the development commission and the city, um, for the city to, um, do the work associated with the projects and the development commission will pay for that.
Questions for Sherlyn on this side? All right. So with that, any motion to adopt?
I move we adopt Resolution Number 630 dash 21, authorizing the TDC administrator to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Tuolton.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 630 dash 21, authorizing the TDC administrator to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Tuolton. Any discussions on those motions? All right. Commissioner Pratt.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Hillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes.
Yes.
Commissioner Grimes.
Aye.
I invite, I vote all, I, I vote yes also. It's unanimous. Woo. All right. Uh, there are no commission, uh, roundtables. So I'll go ahead and ask for a vote for adjournment of tonight's commissioners meeting, the TDC meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. Voting aye. Those opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you everyone for attending tonight. Have a good evening.